How are you tonight, Terri? Good? Enjoying your summer?
We haven't been out on the boat in like two weeks.
What I asked Ross, I said, is that your group there? Those are your kids? He goes, no, those are skateboarders.
Too much going on. Well, he's been putting on roofs. He upped his roof for his brother and then we've been for a roof on for his best friend's father. He says, I hope nobody else hears this.
What do we got on there? It's under?
I know.
What's that under?
There's a contingent transfer.
Yeah, this one here.
And I hear they're very well behaved on it. That's only where they stay. Yep, yep. Well, it's always one.
Do you all stand by? Punch the leaders, please.
The United States of America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Roll call.
Mayor. First ward.
Present.
Second ward.
Present.
Third ward.
Present.
Fourth ward.
Present.
Fifth ward.
Here.
Sixth ward.
Here.
For Mayor Hayden. Mayor Hayden. Mayor Hayden had eye surgery last Wednesday. I went over and saw him on Saturday. He's doing very well. I called him just before the meeting. There's probably a recuperation time of two to three weeks. And we're all having our prayers and hoping that the operation is a success. It's a fairly delicate operation, but of course, as you know, the technology is such that they get better and better at this. So, we're hoping that everything comes out good. Actually, on our agenda for the first item, it was a proclamation, but I talked to members of the committee, the community task force, and one of those people told me that they would prefer, in fact, they had already indicated to their members, that they would like the proclamation to be read on our first meeting in September. So, I'm going to recommend to the council that we forego doing that tonight and do the mayor's proclamation on September 4th. The second item on the agenda, a letter was sent to the mayor some time ago from Time Warner, concerning Time Warner, from the State Department of Public Service. And it had to do with the franchise that the city of Fulton has with Time Warner. And there was a talk of having an extension to properly prepare the city for any negotiations that they might want to have. And we're very fortunate enough tonight to have Pat Johnson from the state, who's going to give us a presentation and let the council know what this means. Thank you, Pat. If you want to go right over there?
Now, I have a real outside voice. Do I need to use?
Oh, I don't think you needed that.
Hello, everyone. I'm Pat Johnson, the New York State Department of Public Service, the cable TV section. And the reason for my being here, I was asked by your clerk, Joseph Tetra, to come and discuss what is all of this about? Our contract with Time Warner has expired, and we have not renewed our contract. But we don't know what it is we can do, what they should be doing, and how you can help us maybe do what it is we should be doing. Well, the first thing that Time Warner does of this process is to send you a letter that says, hi, your contract's going to be up in three years, and we would like to continue to service the city of Fulton with cable service. And by federal law, they really have to do that to make sure that they are going to be your cable company. The second thing that happens, and sometimes along with that letter of intent, is a proposal, a franchise agreement. And they hope that when you get the letter and you get the proposal, that you can just read it, give it to your attorney, check it out to make sure it fits within the law and the ramifications of, who is the attorney here?
Mary Range.
Mary Range.
Okay, and that you would just sign it, send it back to Time Warner, and you'd be locked into a contract for additional 10, 15 years. Well, in this case, your mayor and your city clerk decided, we don't want to do that. We want to really know what this is all about. This is a process that you can go through, and the first thing we ask that you do, the pink and blue papers would discuss that, that you spend some time reviewing your current contract. The purpose of looking at your current contract is to make sure that your cable company has lived up to what they said they were going to do. Now, I don't believe Time Warner was your company 10 years ago. I think it might have been TCI?
No, it was.
It was?
Yes.
Okay.
New Channels or something.
It was New Channels. It was New Channels. Well, believe it or not, New Channels is now part of Time Warner, but it wasn't, okay? And when you have a former company that is different than your current company, you will find that the contract, that the proposal that Time Warner has sent you, might be very different from your current contract, and that the New Channels contract might have forfeited you a lot more perks than you would get in this new proposal. So, I'm asking you to maybe assign someone to read through the contract, to see that all of the things New Channels said they were going to do, and some of it might include money paid to the city, some of it might include channels or origination points, which means that maybe they would have given you a live feed out of the city hall. All of that might be in your current contract, and you haven't looked at it in 10 years. So, you need to go back and look at that current contract. That's the first thing you should do. The second thing you should do is to decide what it is you think cable should be able to do for the city of Fulton. And that would include what we term line extension. Everyone that wants to have cable within the city limits can have it. Usually, that's not an issue. It's the city, the entire city is usually wired. If it was a village, the entire village is usually wired. However, there might be five years down the road, an area within the city that is not built up, and it's on the planning board right now, and it's going to be a warehouse area, or it's going to be a new development or something like that. That would be something you would bring to the attention of Time Warner, so that when you have your other utilities digging holes, putting in their wires, their conduit, that you would have Time Warner do the same thing, so your streets would only be destroyed once for everybody. So, you might give that some consideration. Someone on your planning board might have that information before you do it. After you've done that, after you've decided some of the things that you feel cable should do for you, then you might want to invite someone from the school board to come and tell you what the school board sees cable helping the schools or the students and like that. I understand the school board has their own budget, they have their own monies. However, the cable is for the entire city, and if they have some needs that you can support through the contract, that might be something you want to include, okay? Then after you've done all of that, due diligence, and you've decided what it is you want, how you can help the city as well as the school district, then at that time, we might invite Time Warner over and have them do exactly what I'm doing. Hi, I'm Time Warner. This is what we propose for the next five years, 10 years, 15 years, whatever, and this is what we've done for the city in the last five years, et cetera, et cetera. And I would suggest you have a representative from Time Warner come out and do that. And at that point, we can start to negotiate. What they have sent you is what I would consider, Mr. Tetra gave me a copy of the proposal, what they sent you is a proposal, and it's really like the skeleton, and it's really up to this board to put the meat on those bones. And you do that by the due diligence, okay? Now, there are some things you can do that are within the law, and there are some things you want which are not part of the law, and I'll start there. The first thing that people want to know about is internet service. Well, that's not part of this process anymore. I'm sorry to have to share that with you. In the year 2000, the federal government decided that internet service is an international informational service. It is not a telecommunications service. When they designated it as an international informational service, it came out of this process. There was a time we were receiving franchise fees or monies for anyone who had internet services in their homes or in their business. When that was declared, those monies stopped. I want to stop paying that money, and we cannot make that part of this process, okay? The second thing everybody wants to talk about is programming. We had enough programming about different churches, we had enough programming about golf or whatever. What we really need in the city of Fulton is more German programming. Yeah, okay, it's not part of this process. Federal government has decided that. That is left up to them, the cable operator, as a way of doing business, the program. They have to buy it in packages, and you know, the way they have to buy it, instead of just buying maybe one channel, they have to buy a package of 50 channels. And they give it to you that way. Whatever they're able to buy, that's what you're able to receive. So, programming has been taken out of this process as well. Well, those are the two major things that most municipalities are concerned about, but there are five or six areas that you can affect. First one being line extension. We talked about that. It's not an issue for a city, so I'm moving on to the second one. Public educational governmental access, PEG access. Right now, Terry is filming this meeting to be shown on one of your public educational governmental access channels. That is original programming that can be sent across the television channels for your constituents to watch. Public means that that would be a forum where people could send their tapes in. I always use the example that a lot of people, because when I look around, I don't know why this always happens, but I'm almost always the only black person in the room. And people say, we hear this word, Kwanzaa. What the heck is Kwanzaa? Well, my husband and I could celebrate Kwanzaa, tape it, send it to Time Warner, and they would put it on the public access channel. Okay? That, everyone could watch, and they would go, oh, so that's what it is. I thought it was some big deal. Okay? That's public access. Governmental access, is Terry taking this meeting right here? This meeting, I'm sure all of you have seen it, one of your meetings on, okay? The other part is the educational. We talked to Joseph, Terry, and other gentlemen here, but we talked about the fact that in your schools, they may want to tape the graduation. They may want to tape that play that they put on, they have that performance every year, and they may want to tape it and have it shown on the cable station. Well, according to the New York State rules, your governmental and educational channel are a shared channel. You take turns, you make out some sort of schedule, and you have your programming shown, and the public channel is separate, okay? This is something that we might discuss a little more detail down the road, because I understand that your channels are not working exactly that way, but it's something that we could look at and maybe even improve. But that's public educational governmental access. This young lady here decided that she wanted to have the baptism of her grandchild shown to everybody in the city of Fulton. She could film it, send it to Time Warner, and they would put it on the channel. So, there is some, a really good upside to PEG access, and there is some really negative parts to PEG access, because when you come to this original programming piece, you're talking about First Amendment rights, everyone has First Amendment rights, so that some things that are shown on your public educational governmental access channels are not something that you really would want to be shown. But our office is there to help you with those sort of situations and give you some suggestions as to how to work with that. And Time Warner would work with you as well. And the third, fourth thing I'll talk about is your franchise fee. Most municipalities want to hear about that. That's the money that Time Warner sends you on a quarterly, semi-annually, or annual basis. You decide how you receive that money. If you're getting it annually, you might want to look at getting it quarterly, okay? You have them send you the money how it meets your budget, okay? Years ago, everybody got it annually, but a city of this size, you'd probably receive a very substantial amount of money. You might want to look at getting it quarterly, okay? All right. The fees represent money that the subscribers have deducted from their monthly payment at the end of the quarter, the semi-annual payment, or the annual payment. Your percentage, which is either 3 or 5 percent, I don't remember, is sent to your general treasury, okay? It goes right into your general fund, and you do with it what you would like to do with it. The maximum allowed by federal law and state law is 5 percent at the maximum allowed. Okay? Understand that when you get the monies, you might use the monies to, for the water bill, a water tower, to fix the streets. And everybody in the municipality, was I reading your mind? Everybody in the municipality benefits from what the franchise fee can do or will do. However, it's only the people who have cable, who subscribe to cable, they're the ones that create that money. So, if you're at 3 percent, and you're thinking in terms of increasing it to 5 percent, understand that only the subscribers are paying that money, and it usually is looked upon as a tax by the city board, because you're going to be, you're the ones who would increase it or decrease it, okay? Customer service. Customer service shouldn't be a problem. You're a big city, Time Warner wants to make sure that everything that's happening out in the world as far as telecommunications is concerned happens here in the city of Fulton. Do you have the telephone, cable, and internet package? Have they offered that already here? All right, so they're giving you the state-of-the-art program. You have minimally 750 megahertz? Okay. Which means that there's a lot more room for growth for other, different products to be rolling out. We don't know of any yet, but quite frankly, I think cell phones would be the next thing that they offer. But, it was in the papers? Well, I'm shocked.
And I don't get your paper.
Yeah? Was it really?
Yeah.
But I figured it was, I figured it was next, because that way, they'll have a quarter. They want to be on top of Verizon or the other competitors. And we're going to talk about that, too. Free service. Free service is the fact that they will, according to their current contract, you're going to have to look in there and see where the free service should be applied, but it's generally applied in all municipally-owned buildings. Free service is only cable service. I understand that the fire department now has to respond through the electronically, they say, through the internet, all of their reporting systems. But it's not free. If you want internet service, there's a fee for it. I understand that there's a government level of fee service and a business level. I would ask and check to see if you get the government service. I think it's cheaper than the business service, okay? And that gives you the firewall and all the other installation and all like that. Like I said, it used to be free, but it's not part of this process anymore, so there is a cost associated with it, but because the fire department has to respond that way, you're going to want that here in this building. And if the fire department is doing it, I'm sure down the road, the police department will have to do it as well. And lastly, and I leave it for last, length of the contract, the term of the contract. According to our rules, your term could be as long as 15 years, maximum of 15 years. And I'll just talk about that a little bit, in that most municipalities say, why on earth would we want to have a contract that long? The very reasons that you would say to me why you would not want to have a contract that long would be my argument for why you wouldn't want to have a contract that long. And that's going to bring me to competition. If in fact, who is your telephone company? Is it Verizon?
No.
Windstream.
Alltel.
Who is it? Alltel?
Alltel.
If in fact, and it's not a fact, Alltel were at this minute offering video services, they would have to come to you, just like Time Warner, and ask for a franchise agreement, and you would have to agree to it. Your contract is non-exclusive.
Can we ask questions?
Windstream does it now. People can get cable through, through Windstream. So, you're saying that they should have come to us for?
This is not, the state of New York should not provide video.
Is that with a dish, though?
They're doing it through a dish. Dish is not regulated.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
All right.
But it's, they're using the word cable. You have to be real careful now.
My, my internet flows, and that comes through.
Terry, the dish.
They're still, they're using a DSL.
Oh.
They're using a DSL line, and they're getting it through satellite.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And we need to know that. We mean.
Us, the public now.
We need to know that, that there's a difference between that cable, which is a wire, and the satellite, and then like your telephone, you have the wireless. So, we have a whole lot of different things going on here.
Okay, Pat, do you come back when it comes time and sit down and go over this, so that we don't, because it's going to be, no, I won't be here then. Sorry. But these guys will, okay?
Yes, if I'm asked. If I'm asked, I'll be here every step of the way. The last time I was saying, Joe, the last time I came, I made this presentation, and I never came back. This is 10 years now. I have to be asked that, okay? Because I'm giving you the tools, and if you don't need me, you know, I'll go on to another municipality.
Just remember that, Ron.
Okay. Our services are free, okay? Actually, it's not free. You pay for my services. Through your franchise fee, it's a very, very small percentage, but it is, that's how they pay for the commission on cable TV, which is now the Public Service Commission Cable Session. But I want to get back to competition, because everybody's talking about competition. As I said, you need to know that there are different kinds of providers. You have wireless, okay? You have the satellite, and then you have the wire, okay? What I'm talking about is a head-on competition with Time Warner, which would be another wired video provider. Verizon is doing it in the state of New York. They started in Westchester County, Dutchess, Rockland, I say Long Island, I'm from Long Island, Nassau and Suffolk Counties, and they're working their way up. They have all of the facilities in the Syracuse area, but they have not turned it on yet, okay? That would be a wired video service. That, your contract as it stands, is a non-exclusive contract. And as such, if Alltel came to you for wanting to provide a video via cable, they would have to get a franchise. Verizon, they would have to get a franchise. AT&amp;T, they have to get a franchise. You could have six providers in your municipality supplying video at the same time, with the purpose of bringing the cost down, because competition usually does that. So, everyone understand that. So, that's where we stand. You can have a 15 term. The main reason I wanted to bring that up is that if Alltel came to you and said that they wanted to provide cable service, they have to meet the minimum term of your current contract. So, you don't want your current contract to be too old.
Right.
And you want it to be the best contract you can get, because they have to meet it. PEG access, line extension, term, franchise fees. You're getting 5 percent from Time Warner, you'll get 5 percent from Alltel, okay? All right. So, you want to negotiate this contract with the best terms and conditions that you can get, and you want to lock into it for as long as possible. Another thing that's hanging in the air now is the possibility of statewide contracts, which means that I would not come to you ever again. I'd sit there with my magical pen, and I'd decide what's best for the citizens here. Okay?
For the whole state.
I'm being a little bit facetious here for the whole state. But the point is that you would not have input. New York does not believe that. We don't, in our office. We don't believe that we should have that, but one of our assemblymen believes it, and is he's written a bill, and we were surprised that it wasn't passed this year. So, don't mean to put the fire under your feet while I'm striking the match, but you need to really get started on this, make sure it's what you want, and don't have me deciding what's best for the citizens here anymore.
So, if we signed like a five-year contract, we're doing three years, and then you pass the bill, would we still be under that five-year contract?
That is our hope, that you would be grandfathered.
Okay, okay.
All right? You sign the 10-year contract, with, our assumption is that it would be grandfathered to the end of the contract.
But who would want to, the way technology is? I mean, technology's changing too fast. I think about 10 years ago.
But, that's what your argument, my argument, I have the same argument back. The argument is, has technology changed in the last 10 years? Has it?
No.
Of course it has. Did it hurt your, did it hurt your cable at all?
Hurt it.
No, because Time Warner kept upgrading you.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what we're saying. They want you to have the latest, they want you to have the state-of-the-art. They want you, why? They don't want you to go to Alltel or.
Wireless.
Okay? So, that's what I'm saying to you. Whatever your argument is, I'm going to throw that right back at you, the same argument that I would say to you, well, maybe better lock in for 10 years, instead of three or five or whatever. But that's your decision.
When do we have to make that decision?
When you've done all that you do.
How much of an extension do we have?
The extensions that we give you are for six months, and the state is really, really looking very hard at these extensions. They feel that you had 10 months, 10 years to come up with a new, so why, how are you going to do it in six months?
For six months from when?
Actually, actually, according to what Joe and I spoke about, you should have received a new one in July, and you didn't. So, I have to go check back to see if it was sent or it wasn't sent. And if it was sent in July, it would be six months after that, okay? And in that time, if I in fact know that you are going through the process, then I will probably call and say something, you know, where are you, give a status report or something like that. But just to end this, so that we don't go on forever, I'll hesitate. Any other questions? Any from the audience?
I think you covered it very well. I think we'll be calling, I think.
This is card, I'll leave it right here. Joe, I want to make sure you get one.
Yes, you can.
No, never mind.
Patrick.
And just to let you know that I'm here throughout the process. It's your decision how you utilize in our office. If you decide that you just have some questions, and you just want to call, just give me a call. If you decide that when you have Time Warner come to make their presentation, if you want to hear, give me a call. If you decide you want me sitting at your table negotiating with or for you, you just give me a call. But if you don't call me, I won't see you in 10 years, because I'm going to be retired.
You'll be both then.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me introduce my colleague before I leave, because she will probably be there. This is Kathleen Hope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with our agenda. I've had a request from Alvin and Hayden to move up item number 10? No, 11.
11.
Okay. Item number 11 up to number one. That's okay with the council?
It's okay with me.
Resolved that Chamberlain be authorized to transfer $15,000 from the contingent account into the A5110.4810 account for the purchase of blacktop materials for escape. for the purchase of blacktop materials for escape board surface to be constructed at Van Buren Park.
I'd like to ask for, uh, somebody to move that.
I'll make the move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
And for discussion, please, yes.
Yeah, discussion. I'd like to, uh, table us until our next recreation meeting. And, uh, so Barry Ostrander could have a little say on this, seeing these recreations implemented.
Don't let her.
If we run this by you.
Yes. Yes. Barry don't have a problem with it.
I think it's long overdue. I mean, is there anybody out there that...
Well, that's what I, that's what I was gonna ask for. Obviously, we, we haven't had a crowd like this in a long time, so...
And you don't even have to vote on it this year.
Uh, would somebody from, would like to speak to this issue?
Lynn Larson would like to.
Go ahead, Lynn.
You know, once again, I want to take and congratulate the Fulton Council on the work you've done, okay, throughout the city. Okay, and this coincides with this here. You know, so much improvement has been done in Fulton in the last twenty years. And I'm gonna tell you what. You guys, right here, the alderman, the mayor, the people of Fulton, have been working hand in hand to clean the city, keep it clean, and make things better for the citizens. And when I discovered about this thing about a skateboard park, that is fantastic. This is gonna be a major breakthrough, okay, toward creating, creating activity for the youth, and hopefully it'll spread throughout the county. One night, a couple of years ago, Tops parking lot, Tops was still there. Stood over there and watched these kids on these bikes, and I'll tell you what, they can get that up on that high end wheel and just keep it there and just... And it was fantastic. I stood there and watched it. They were very, it was very good, okay? And in the same thing, a little bit later, on in time, I was down here by Canal View, where there were some kids down there with some skateboards. And they was not causing nobody any trouble whatsoever. Was not in the way of cars or nothing, okay? And you wouldn't believe how these, how they was performing on those things. It was like watching a free show. I enjoyed, you know? A lot of times when we reach a certain age, we forget about when we was that age.
Oh, I don't want to.
And to create something and have something for these folks to do, and to go to, and enjoy, I'm gonna tell you what, when this thing is done and built, and I think you ought to act on it immediately. When this thing is, is done and built, I'll tell you what. You're gonna wind up spending a little bit more money, because you'll be putting benches around here, because I, for one, am gonna be over there watching them. And I'm gonna tell you what, it's fantastic. Wait till you see it, and when it's done, wait till you see it, okay? And see the performances that carries on. It's gonna be fantastic. You know, another thing is, while I'm up here, I'll be all done with it, but jobs, okay? You know, once again, I see, and with this skateboard thing, with this, with that, everything else, but I see it again through talking to each of you folks, is the fact that jobs is still your number-one priority in creating business here in the city of Fulton, and you're doing a fine job. I'll tell you, few downfalls here and there, fight back, get things together, and move on. I do not like people who are negative constantly. I mean, you do have to look on the bad side a little bit, on something and this and that there. And, you know, it's time, Operation Oswego County, we need somebody with ambition, drive, motivation, somebody who knows how to talk to business people and get business in here, because that in turn will help the city of Fulton. And I think we all know who I'm talking about. I'm not gonna bring up names. But we do need somebody with ambition, drive, and somebody to get in there and do that. And you folks, you know, have, you can do that by just...
We're getting off the track.
You know what I mean?
We're getting off the track a little bit.
Because you have authority.
Thank you. Okay, I just, I definitely...
I will get off of here right now, but I'm gonna tell you what. You know, like I say, you're gonna be spending some more money on benches, because when you watch them, it's gonna be fantastic.
Thank you. I, I just want somebody from the skateboarders, uh, that would be you, wouldn't it?
Thanks for letting me have a talk. I appreciate it.
I'm gonna sneak in while you, before you start. And I got a report from my daughter that everyone was very well behaved there, because she plays tennis over there. And she said everybody was very well behaved and enjoying it immensely, so.
Thank you. I, I want, my name's Elizabeth McQuaid. Uh, I wrote several articles to the Post Standard, Fulton Daily News, Valley News. Uh, I, I'm an advocate for the boys. Uh, my husband and I are, really would appreciate a skate, skate park. Couple of the boys here tonight received tickets recently, and they'll be in this courtroom tomorrow. And I pray that the court has mercy on them, because right now, there isn't a place for them to skate.
That's right.
And these are good boys. They're respectful boys. I mean, all they need is a place to play. I mean, just because they're teens and, and, you know, and like, what's his name? He said that, you know, remember when we were young, we need a place. I mean, they're not basketball players, they're not football players, not baseball players, but they're skateboarders. And the X Games was recently, this weekend, if you got to watch the X Games and stuff. And you know, they'll, like Eric Cole with hockey for Oswego, you never know who you might have sit right here, right now. I mean, it's very important that they have a place to be. And I, I thank you, and I appreciate that you're even considering it. Thank you.
Thanks again. Can I say one thing? What, what I was talking about was, uh, we've been on the Recreation Committee for about a year and a half. I think you and your husband first came there, and there came no meeting here, and we talked about it. The last, the, what we were talking about at one time was, since we closed the West Side Pool...
Yes, that was, that was an excellent idea. I love that idea.
While we were still mulling about whether to put it there or what, that's the last night, I mean, and that's why I was trying to refer it back to Barry.
Actually, that, that is a better idea, the boys and the cement and the pool, and you already have the fenced-in area and everything.
And that's what I'm, I don't think there's anybody up here that, that is not for the skateboard, believe me.
Okay, okay.
And, and Tom, you're, you're correct. And that, that's pretty much the way it's gone. We've talked about it a lot the last few weeks here.
Right.
But I know, I was with Barry Ostrander, uh, Friday before last, all day, and he's for it and everything. But the problem is right now, Daryl, and I think Ronnie and everybody's kind of, really don't want to do anything with the West Side Pool yet, because I think they'd still like to try to get that up and going, maybe not this year, but a year or two down the road. So they really don't want to close that off yet. And we've talked a little bit about it, and, and what we've come up with is worst-case scenario, all right? Worst-case scenario, you put this skateboard park in down there, it's gonna be a hundred by hundred, fine blacktop slab. If in the future we did want to do that over there, we do it, we can make another tennis court out of this one, because the tennis court is used all the time. So it, it wouldn't go to waste one way or the other, you know, that's the way we're looking at it.
I, I don't have a problem, you know, I'm for, I'm for it completely, but...
And it's only fifteen thousand dollars compared to all the money that we put in pools and, and, and War Memorial and this and that. That's a minimal amount of money. Minimal amount of money. And I heard you need a little bit more dirt too, besides the blacktop, so...
That's already, that's already ordered. I'm just waiting to get it down there.
So you're not asking for much.
The bikers are having a ball down there with the dirt, huh?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Time, and they wanted to do it around, they were, the tow pads were howling because they were bothering them, all that kind of stuff. Biggest problem then was who's responsible for the insurance?
Exactly. That's, that's a point too, yeah.
That was what they were concerned with.
Right, yeah.
Liability, if anybody got hurt, uh, any city may think who's gonna be responsible. And they said, we'll be responsible for our own, we'll put our own. Well, that's why it got dropped, because that was never solved.
That's right.
Right, but that's always been a concern. But the kids that are doing it downtown now...
That's right.
No, but seriously, if the kids doing it downtown now get hurt, who's gonna get sued?
Right.
City.
The only thing is that they're doing the elderly down there. This is a, would be a city park, and we're accountable for it.
Yeah, this, this still don't matter, because years ago I used to race up the Fulton Speedway. You sign these papers saying that you don't hold them responsible. But since I got out of it, somebody sued the Speedway. So it doesn't matter. It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
And you think, I, that's sort of, that's the issue.
But I, and I also think though, this, this will be the beginning, that maybe you'll get some, um, local sponsorship. I know the hairdressers, Kim Doyle, years ago, was interested in it, and she says, look at, she says, just let them know, I'm interested in helping, raising money, whatever you want to do. So this fifteen thousand may just be the seed to, you know, other things that you'll need, so...
Trust me, insurance can, is only gonna...
Get a rider, and you know...
Right.
It's always been a concern. It's still a...
Right.
You know, we've had kids down there on their bikes, one broke a collarbone, and one got, uh, ended up with eight, uh, staples in his head. So they're gonna have accidents, and...
We gotta hurry up.
My question, is this, this fifteen thousand, is, is this gonna take care of everything down there, or is this just the beginning?
Well, it's gonna take care of everything right now. If we want to put a fence around it later on, if we do like, uh, Blast Guy does...
We are gonna pay for the fence.
Yeah, but then you can get, then you get sponsorship. People can put, you know, help build money for the fence and put their advertisement on it like they do with the races.
I think I want to hear, uh, one of the skateboarders has got a question, I think. But, wanna come up here? So we can hear you.
My name's Steve. Uh, my parents are Kim and Tim Doyle, and we did, we did, um, back in like, two thousand ninety-nine, we did try to get the ball rolling on this, and the liability was a big issue at that point. And I, I think that's why it didn't get pushed through or whatever, but, um, my point is, uh, basically, now that the fifteen grand or whatever it's gonna take to get, to get the ball rolling here, you can look at it like, you know, spend the money, put the blacktop down there, or, you know, kids keep riding downtown and doing the grinding and, you know, the benches. It's eventually gonna be, you know, repairs downtown is where the money will be going, you know, if, if, you know, we continue to ride or whatever, in, in, in the areas we're not supposed to. But I think eventually, once you get, you know, the pad down and some jumps built or whatever, maybe next summer we can all meet again and, you know, consider putting a fence. You know, once you get it fenced in and enclosed, then you charge a couple bucks a day to ride or whatever, and it'll be like, you know, it'll be a...
Snowball.
A little, a little system.
That's right.
Excuse me, um, there was a mention of X Games this past weekend. I noticed all the participants wear helmets.
Yep.
Would anybody have a problem in your group if, if that was mandatory to be on that property with a skateboard helmet, as we require for bikes?
As long as it's just helmets. Now, if you guys get home crazy with elbow pads and knee pads...
Well, I'm just asking a question, you know, the, the head obviously is the most important part.
Just, I'd say, once you have, once you start charging, if it gets to that point, you know, with the fence around it and stuff, then yeah, you should put up a sign, you guys can't ride here unless you got helmets, you know? My uncle Tracy would probably be more than happy to, you know, donate some helmets or whatever it takes to get kids wearing helmets.
What's the consensus of these people here about what? Thoughts are kind of for wearing helmets?
I don't like wearing helmets.
Do you have a problem wearing them?
Maybe if you came down to either the skate park or not having, you will wear a helmet. Choice is odd. We'd rather have the skate park.
I got a couple of concerns, um...
You could get helmets on kids.
Well, well, this, this blacktop, will that suffice for you, for skateboarders? I mean, because normally you ask for or look for all kinds of, uh, different changes and jumps and, uh...
Those week off of time, I'm, I'm actually working on myself, a little, you know, like a block jump, or whatnot, to, you know, just a takeoff and a landing, you know, simple for a bicycle.
Most of you have portable equipment anyways, don't you? Rails and things that you built to do this on in your own driveways and things?
Right. What I'm thinking is, you know, it, once the pad's down there and kids start buzzing about it, then, then, you know, bring their rails from home and, you know, bring them down with the blacktop and whatnot, and, and it'll just, it'll just snowball kind of from there. With, you know, with the dirt being there, we've, we've been putting a lot of hours and building up the dirt piles, so we can give them rides and ride along.
I think there's a concern too, that I'm hearing from up here too, is who sets the, the rules, the regulations? Uh, who oversees it? I mean, somebody's gotta be somewhat responsible.
Well, once it's fenced in, a real park, it's...
But right now, if we put the blacktop down and then they show up, and then that's, that's our entire responsibility?
Well, I mean, you know, we can still put signs up that says, uh, helmets required. Uh, if you've got some riding on a helmet, kick them off.
Well, you know, it's...
They should police them now.
Yeah, but...
The, the guys, guys could tell you, there's a guy with a red truck that comes down there all the time, right?
I mean, do you have any problem? Does, I'm sure you all have cell phones, if there was any problem or anybody gave you a problem or something like that, that you would feel comfortable calling the police and asking them to come down? And, and you know, really, this is just their seed money. They just needed some seed money to do this. And it's, I mean, I can remember when your mother started that years ago, and I wasn't even on the council. And I think that we have an obligation to, our, our young people in the city, besides our constituents, who can vote for us, because you're gonna vote pretty soon. Right? You look old enough.
I think these group of guys too are much older than I imagined. I thought there were a lot younger ones that were also skateboarders. So I would hope that you'd be a lot more responsible if, if indeed you are the, what appears to be the ones that are gonna be using.
It would, you know, it'd be like, it'd be our own place.
That's right.
It'd be like a family...
That's right.
...kind of thing about it, so that, you know, if somebody came in and, you know, wasn't wearing their helmet, and now, now, some kid would be, you know, brought up.
Or doing something illegal.
And, you know, just, just having a spot there for, for kids to go and hang out, ride, and I think it would be, you know, beneficial. Or just to get the kids out of downtown, you know, every day, so, and, um, it'd be kind of like their own little spot, you know?
You got me, Saul.
I just want to mention too, a few years ago, um, we made available the parking lot off of Anita Street, and we let them pretty much decide what they were gonna put in there. They would put certain jumps and stuff like that. And then they ended up being vandalized, and we ended up not doing it anymore, right? How many years ago was that, Ron?
Uh, yeah, I don't remember, about ten or twelve years ago. Down there, it was all so, I mean, just, you can't see it from the road. So something could go down there and create vandals. It's pretty hard unless you stand on the bridges.
Do you think we'd have better security over at Van Buren?
Well, I mean, Van Buren Street's a major street, so you could visit the neighborhood and all, Eric, you would want that shit.
I also have a concern because of, of where it's gonna go. I, I remember a few years ago, the CDA wanted to put a, a building on the corner of Fremont and Van Buren Park, and they got down about that far, and there was a surface that we didn't really want to see anymore. So, I mean, does, does the blacktop, I mean, is it gonna be, is it gonna heave?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna take it down, what, what I think they said, and put a foundation under it so that it be gravel for now?
Yeah, the location, we can stick it all the way up and come closer to the, to the... And closer to the road, because the actual landfill there was more as you got out.
So is there less landfill downward location?
Yeah.
That a squirts are?
They're still all landfill, but they're gonna put a foundation underneath there, okay?
They're gonna take up that place, they should have placed it there. I don't believe it.
Okay.
Well, no, no, they don't like it on their land.
Also, what I'm hearing, and I understand what, what, uh, Counselor Shalone is saying, but, um, I had a conversation with the mayor, and one of the items that's on our agenda towards the end, and we didn't move that up, like we did the skateboard parks, but, um, we got a memo from the city forester, Ron Edick, that said to the council, our, our tree budget is zero. Um, we can no longer take any trees down. So, uh, the council has to consider, uh, how, how do we pay for the trees that we're gonna have to take down from now till the end of the year? And that comes out of contingency, and when my conversation with the mayor was the effect that, um, we have to be very careful with the money we have left. We don't know what's gonna happen from August to December, and how much money are we gonna spend on true emergencies whatsoever? So that's a concern too, whether, you know, and, and I think what, I, I know for sure, the item on the agenda is for ten thousand dollars for trees. Um, I think the council and, and Ron Edick were indicating that, um, probably twenty thousand, thirty thousand. And the mayor cautioned me, he said, you know, we just, we just have to do what we have to do, and that's it. Uh, the tree is in, in danger of, uh, falling down or something like that, we have to take it down, certainly for the public safety of, of the city. But if it's just, just something that's just for cosmetic purposes, we won't be able to have the money to do it, so... So the, the money is a concern, even though it's only fifteen thousand, so. I have that concern, I have the concern about the structure itself. And as Tom said, our, our hope was to, and I know what, uh, uh, Counselor Hayden said, but I, I had a lot of hope for converting the West Side Pool into a, a skateboard park. I thought that would be great. Um, I don't, you know, sometimes it's very difficult. Once you close something, uh, something would really have to drastically change to open it up again. And I, for one, I haven't gotten any, has anybody got any calls for, uh, West Side Pool being opened up again? Has anybody got any calls for, uh, West Side Pool being opened up again? So, um...
No, but Bob?
Yes, Ron?
We haven't gotten any calls from West Side Pool, but we, we had, uh, I figured probably from East Side since it was... To the point though, we had emails from the neighbors, that that's supposed to hold.
So now there's too, too many kids going over there?
Yeah, it's harder to manage them because they're so numerous. And even, who knows, it may be cheaper to, to start to build one. We'll be trying to, we had that adjacent, but the possibility you want to consider is, if the council goes along with this and you see it's a success.
That's right.
Uh, we have kids that live on both sides of the river.
That's right.
You could end up with one eighty-seven, huh?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
You know, I mean, I guess the only way you can tell that is to judge the success of this.
And what I was gonna say too is, the West Side has the school, the parking lot over there and everything. East Side kids don't have any place to go. We need something on the East Side for the kids.
Russell, is that, um, the, the bare minimum as far as width and that, that, you know, that's usable for these, these individuals? I mean, have you researched that to see if...
Basically what we're doing, Dan, is pretty much judging everything. We've been up the last guy and checked that one. That one was a hundred and ten by a hundred and ten. We're just saying, I'm sure that'd be good size. And, uh, up there, they've got a pad and they've built some ramps and all that stuff later on. That's basically what we're looking to do, something to get, even some kids to bring in for now.
Of course, they never use the parking lot down there by Black Lawson. Just never use anything by parking lot.
That's, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
But...
Well, they tried that, definitely if they were doing it and the kids were bringing boards up and they were told they couldn't do it, they said, "Put a hat of boards under the bridge and bring them out" when they wanted to use it, but, but just break it down. It's there. It's responsible for one end of the other, why can't we do something with that one down there?
Down at Black Lawson? Is that what you're talking about?
Because it's gonna be parking, I think, for pick, parking for downtown people and getting strokes.
Is there any other discussion? I know Tom has a, a motion to table, is there a second to that?
You had a first motion first, you had a first one, then a resolution, you had a motion second.
I seconded it.
Tom made a motion to table. So did you need a second? We need a second, right? That's not an issue, we run the table.
But doesn't, have you got a second from the table?
I'll second. I'll second.
Russ, what are we, what are next recreation meeting?
Next week, I'll do it next week.
But it's, would it be to, like, if you get in there and, I mean, say, the next meeting, two weeks from now, would we really make a decision?
It'll be winter time.
Well, they, they're gonna do, they're gonna do roads first anyway, so that's not an issue as long as we know that something's gonna happen, all right? I mean, 'cause it's not gonna happen this week or next, okay? We just want to get something rolling on this.
That's right.
Okay? So, yeah, we can hold it off, but that, that's, that's what you say. I, I...
I don't, I don't think anybody up here has got a problem with it. It's just that, I'd love to go in that recreation room with all of us and Mr. Lawson and the kids or whoever wants to come and see where we're...
How much more do you have to debate it though, Tom? How much more do you have to debate? I mean, and discuss it, we discussed it for years, absolutely years. Let's just, let's just make a decision. Let's vote on your table to table and then vote for it. Because, I mean, it's just, I mean, you could beat something to death.
I'm not sure anything's gonna change from now until next week.
That's right.
So, um...
Vote out of that.
Vote on the table. Roll call, vote.
So explain it, Joe. Table, when, when we say yes or no, we're meaning, we're no to table?
No.
Just vote out of it.
Yes or no to table.
Vote out of it.
Tom's taking the table back, whatever the parliamentary procedure is.
So you're, you're...
He's withdrawing his motion.
To withdraw. Okay, we, you have a motion to withdraw the table, do we have a second?
To withdraw it? Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call on that. First, first word? If, if you want to withdraw the table, you would vote yes. Second word?
Yes.
Third word?
Yes.
Fourth word?
Yes.
Fifth word?
Absolutely.
Sixth word?
Yes.
Okay, that is carried now. We will need a motion again, uh, well, we already have a motion and second on the resolution. Uh, so I will take a roll call on that. And that's to put the surface up.
This is to put the surface up.
Right. First word?
Yes.
Second word?
Yes.
Third word?
Yes.
Fourth word?
Yes.
Fifth word?
Absolutely.
Sixth word?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Absolutely.
Okay, guys.
Absolutely, yeah. Who's having the party?
Now, we're just paying for it. All we're asking is that you'll be responsible for the property down there. If you take care of it, that's gonna be great. Make it your own, make it your own, make it your responsibility. And it'll work.
And, and like I said, like I said a couple of minutes ago, the guys, I just want to make sure it's clear.
And girls.
Oh, yeah, but...
Thank you.
I've already been told the roads are gonna be done first, okay?
Okay.
So be a little bit patient. It's on the table now, you're all set, so, okay?
Have fun, we'll be down to watch ya. Say hi to your mom, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
No, they don't, they, he asks too much.
Yeah, but now, now we lost our crowd. Way to go, Russ. Look at... Jeez.
Okay.
Might as well go home.
Resolved in the first report for May two thousand seven in the amount of six thousand five sixty-four twenty-nine is received, approved and placed on file.
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item two.
Posed.
Posed, sorry. You'd think this was my first time. Carried.
There you go.
Whereas a property known as five ten Seneca Street has been acquired by the City of Fulton through a tax foreclosure proceeding, whereas said property has been listed for sale with a local real estate agent and a contract for sale has been presented. Wherein this common council has determined that it would be in the best interest of the City of Fulton to accept said contract and therefore be resolved in accordance with New York State Property Tax Law eleven sixty-six and City Code four dash two, the sale of said property to Mark Davis for twenty-five hundred dollars hereby approved and confirmed.
Uh, would this something, be something that Joe would want to comment on at all? No? Nothing to do with you, okay. How about Ron?
Oh, that house, when it took it, it was a big change. They had to add some water and, and a lot of...
Yeah.
We thought we were gonna have to go.
Yeah.
Gross. Doing that, totally, just doing that down the pass run here.
Oh, my God.
So what we're getting from these, uh, buyers is a commitment to, to, uh, make the property better?
Yeah.
Somebody want to move it?
I'll move it.
Russ?
I'll second it.
Second. Counselor Shalom?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Carried. There you go.
Uh, this is, uh, same resolution and this is a property for three, for three lots at White Ave. Uh, and, uh, the sale is to Pete Lindsay for thirty-five hundred dollars.
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? None, carried.
Uh, thi, this is for the property at two sixty-six North Sixth Street. I won't go into all the if and ands, but, uh...
My sixth word's...
Now therefore be resolved that pursuant to chapter fifty-three, the council of the City of Fulton authorizes the Bureau of Code Enforcement to cause this building to be demolished and furthermore declares that all costs for such demolition shall be charged against the land upon which building exists in the same manner as special assessments and/or real property taxes provided for in the charter of the City of Fulton.
Uh, before that, before we move that, I would ask, uh, uh, Ron Woodward to comment on this?
Yeah, this is, uh, a house that, up until a year ago, it had been vacant for a number of years. Family home, I had to rent it. And, um, they did it, went to, uh, ask the landlord. And with your daughter, and she's, excuse me, Victoria Reynolds, uh, there was a fire in that house and, uh...
There's structural damage.
And, uh, we took steps to condemn it, it couldn't last through the living. And I, and of course, they moved, they have a place on Fifty-seventh. So at some point, right now, it's a, it's a vacant structure that, that we failed and our fire protection lines on, it's blocked in the neighborhood. And it's, it's another fire right now. Now, I've explained to Victoria that she didn't handle it well without digging down, that's why we went through the enforcement action that we did. And we went through a lengthy time process to get it. She feels that she has some people that may want to buy it that could re-... And what I have told her is that because we waited so long and we've had so much problems with that, I'm asking the council to go through the authorization tonight. And if you do, probably before we get to demolish it, by the time we get an asbestos survey, by the time we let the quartz out for the asbestos removal, which they're very slow, I dare her knows that.
Yeah.
It'll be two months or three months anyway. And I had told her in the meantime, if she has an interested party, if you demonstrate to us a timeframe because the property's sold, the code violation's going, you know? The building's not gonna be safe just 'cause somebody else owns it. Or it's not gonna be any nicer to the neighborhood because someone else owns it. Uh, and this property, by the way, uh, up until recently, the city had one, tried to keep it clean. And there is a couple unlicensed vehicles everywhere. Yeah, I, but, you know, it's not covered, it's not, uh, it should not be on that. Our next step would become the council to let us throw that out because, uh, we make other people do that and we make you do it. So I'd like to have you go through with it tonight. If, before we get too far in the process, someone comes in that we know that can actually demonstrate to us that they could do something, that we could, we could reverse it. Otherwise, we need you to go through. If we don't, there's people accessing it. We boarded it up on the condemned. The boards get taken out and the people access it. And I will tell you, I've got pictures and I wouldn't want to embarrass anybody. Somebody got a cigarette in there, it's going up the lane. That's how much stuff is. So, I know that, that the council always gets beat up over code enforcement and these are some of the real hard things to do, but it's the right thing to do. You wouldn't want to live across from or next to it. You wouldn't want to go sleeping, hey, hold some kids that go in there and got a cigarette. If we had the police down here, get the kids out.
Ron? Yeah, Mrs. Reynolds, would you like to make a comment to the council?
Just that within the last couple of weeks, we've had, we've cleaned a lot of houses. We almost had, the house so far, some of the garage, we're giving it, driver's got a truck on the street to, to get with this, we have to do a lot more.
That's great because we went through asbestos, but we, we would have to do that on there. They can't do it, but we do.
Am I understanding this right, that the city is getting it? Well... They own it now.
Right.
But the city's getting it for taxes.
No.
No. The ci, city's getting it to demolish it.
It's an unsafe building under state law.
To demolish it.
State law.
But we don't own it.
It's an unsafe building, no.
Right?
What will happen is...
Oh.
Whatever the cost for us to do this, we'll go on that property tax.
Oh.
And if they don't pay that cost, then say one.
Oh. So this is worse than the one on Rochester Street, you're saying?
This is far worse structurally than the one on Rochester Street.
All right, well, so... As long as I see Rochester Street on there soon. The skunk.
We already have it, the, the survey's done on it. The, the, we picked it first, they're, they're, the outfit is removing it. They said in three weeks, they'll be removing the asbestos and Vanessa will take it.
Okay, the only thing is, Ron, they're putting a sidewalk in, Niagara Mohawks putting a sidewalk in 'cause they did the gas line?
We'll be up on time.
Oh, 'cause I was gonna say, why don't they wait until we tear it down? But, okay, I don't want to get off the track, I know.
We, we need to get it down that bar and somebody's gonna get hurt.
All right, we agree.
Is that house unrepairable?
I'm talking about two-way gratification, that's unrepairable.
Mrs. Reynolds, would you have anything else to say? 'Cause we can't really hear you from back there. Why don't you come up to the mic? Sure. Why, why don't you come up to the mic?
No, she said he said everything.
Oh, she's all set, okay.
So, you know, I've had, uh, a few different conversations with Victoria. And I think this afternoon, I had about a twenty-minute conversation with her.
Okay, yeah, 'cause when she first approached here, she had told me that the lawyer had, uh, had asked for this to be put off, so I want to make sure...
He asked me, said that she probably needed a month, and I said, "It was Bruce Clark." I said, "Bruce, uh, we're gonna go through with it. By the time the process is done, it can be two and a half, three months anyway."
Because we're liable anyhow, because it's a...
If the offers are legitimate, they actually do something, they'll show up then and if they're not, we don't want to have to go through the process.
Ron, if it's, um, if it's deemed structurally unsound, what's the difference then? I mean, if, if we're deeming that it can't be repaired, then...
Oh, we didn't say that.
Okay, that's what I want to understand.
We didn't say that. What we're saying is, and we said to her, "You've got to repair this because if you continue to leave it the way it is, the winter load and stuff won't take it." Okay? She says she has a contractor that's prepared to remove some of the beams and make it structures. Now, if that doesn't happen, you get into a winter with the snow and it's, and it's in the shape with the dents and stuff that had crawled up. And kids are regularly getting in there. We boarded it up at our expense and they take, they onboard it and go in.
It's a safety issue.
But the police are there, that's it. I mean, it's, uh...
You're worried about the safety.
Yeah, I, I'm worried about the safety, it's never...
Yeah, right, right, right.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
Did you do the motion, Russell?
Russell? Yeah, motion, second?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Haven't heard none, carried.
Uh, the next item is basically the, uh, this is the agreement for the, uh, intersection improvement for Route three into Route four eighty-one. We need to pass this, the mayor to sign it. State New York sent the contract. Basically what it is.
Couple of fire hydrants? So Roy and Nicole, this has to do with the, uh, the widening of forty-one and, and, uh, okay.
I'll move it.
It's your word.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Haven't heard none, carry it.
Some developers have.
I heard that.
Yeah.
Where the city of Fulton completed a tax foreclosure action on the property of Four Oh Eight Seneca Street, Fulton, New York, now therefore being resolved, that the common council of the city of Fulton hereby authorizes the chief executive officer to prepare and execute a deed to evidence the transfer of said property to the Fulton Community Development Agency to facilitate construction by Fulton Community Revitalization Corporation of a single-family home to be made available through the Affordable Home Ownership Program.
Joe, would you like to discuss that one? 'Cause that is yours, that is your, one of, one of your babies.
This is one of our babies, and, uh, what this is was strictly a clerical error, back when we, uh, sometime in two thousand and five, I believe it was, when we transferred the other properties, this was omitted from that list, and we apologized, we're not really sure if it was the esteemed attorney that we had at the time, meaning the resolution force of the, to staff.
Okay.
Um, but it's strictly just a, I guess, a clerical, clerical error, and on another note, there is a open house.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we're coming.
This weekend, Saturday, intended to, I hope to see everybody there.
Yep.
Say, could be a hayride?
I'll give you a hayride. We are actually gonna have, it's funny you mention that, and we are gonna have a, uh, one of the girls in the office be taking, uh, families around to the different properties. It's all gonna start at six seventeen Sewer Street.
There's a shuttle, there's a shuttle, a shuttle.
Yes, it's actually gonna take you around the other two properties.
Why?
Show you.
Take the shuttle.
Oh, the shuttle, six seventeen?
Yes, Four Oh Eight is sold already, six seventeen sewer, I'm sorry, is where it starts. We're gonna show you Four Oh Eight Seneca and Four Seventeen Seneca.
Yeah, I got that.
Which Four Oh Eight Seneca is currently sold, and we, uh, we hope that, uh, Four Seventeen...
So we're there at ten o'clock at six seventeen sewer, right? Okay. With donuts and coffee?
Yeah, well, I'll definitely be there. Now you got us, now you got us, you got all the council now.
How about breakfast pizza?
Oh, no.
You're pushing, you're pushing it now. There's a motion on that.
Yeah, did you move it?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I will.
A second.
Did you second?
No.
Oh, I'll second.
I'm still in breakfast.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Haven't heard none, passed.
Resolved the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for bids in his office, uh, on August twentieth up to two P M., and to be publicly opened at two fifteen in the mayor's conference room, and this is for curbs on West Edgewater, Patrick Circle, West Fourth Street, and North Sixth Street.
Motion, I'd like to move it.
Are these new curbs or replacement curbs, or?
New curbs.
Brand new curbs?
Yeah.
On new sections?
Uh, replacement curves.
Replacement curves, yeah.
Well, that was the impression I was under, they're not gonna put... Are they new or are they replacing?
Replacement, right.
They're replacing curbs, not...
They're replacing the Patrick Circle and West Fourth, I don't know. Um, that would be, um, second ward.
First.
Replace that, does anybody pay for that, landowner?
Now, they're taking that out?
Great, first, full of her.
What's that?
I don't know, I haven't put mine in, I had to pay half.
You're, for curbs?
Yeah.
When, how long ago was that?
Oh, a long time ago, and there's no curb left, but I had to pay half. And also, city does it for nothing?
Oh.
I want to be...
Well, we don't do it for nothing.
You're, you're paying for it.
Yeah.
There's nothing left because a time to put the road down, the curb's gone, by the way. I had to pay half, you know?
Yeah.
So, I tried to get curbs where I lived about thirty years ago, and I, they wanted me to pay. It was two-thirds, one-third, and I forget which way it was, city one way and...
Used to be sidewalks, too.
I was in Vanessa's property.
I'm sure the policy's gone back and forth, you know? Um, I moved it, was there a second?
Yeah.
Tom, Tom's second, or Tom's fourth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Haven't heard none, passed.
Resolved the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for public care to be held on Tuesday, August twenty-first at seven P M., this is relative to the Fulton law, uh, amended chapter one sixty-five, subsection B, uh, one, C, entitled restricted parking of the vehicle and traffic board, this is the city of Fulton, this is for the, uh, the two extra spaces for the, uh, the brick house apartments. And lots of...
Right. Motion on that?
I'll, I'll move it.
A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Question?
Up discussion, go ahead.
Is that, it says restricted parking, it says thirty spaces on the east side and thirty-two spaces on the southwest side, are those all for the brick house?
No, that's the...
No, no, no.
I was misleading if you read that.
That's right.
It's two, two spaces for the brick house.
It doesn't say that, it says...
Annoyed.
Total of sixty-two, and I'm saying, well, well, currently, there's thirty...
Well, yes, it says employee parking and tenants of the brick, brick house. So the, the two tenants, the two spaces for the brick house are included in that sixty-two.
Actually, we increased it, that, there was a total of sixty spaces there on the east side for employee parking, by permit, and we didn't want to enter employee parking by permit only. So on the south end, west side of that lot, there was extra parking, and there will be when we're done. So we increased it by two.
Only by two, okay.
And they will be, uh, issued a permit to, to park in that lot for two spaces, and they'll be able to go anywhere in that lot, uh, that's allowed permit parking for employees. So the, we did not want to tie them to two specific spots, because then you get into an enforcement thing where...
Right.
You gotta tow cars and ticket them, we didn't want to do that.
Right.
Didn't think that would be...
Smart way.
Okay.
I think we all also have to look at, um, parking in the, the lot next to the lock restaurant, too, as far as, 'cause all of that is, is all-day parking except for the...
Right now, it's unlimited parking.
Unlimited parking in the, in, in the middle, right?
You set the lock closed off, you're required to drive that lot.
Right, that's full all the time.
Back up, they're not gonna replace the parking, it's unlimited there.
So we'll have to, we'll have to make some adjustments there.
Boy, I wish, I wish, I'm sorry, I've got a lot of, uh...
Okay.
Down here, once, once you're...
Yeah.
Hence, hence the, uh, parking lot down by Greg Costin, I think that's where that's gonna come in.
Yeah, we've gotta have some way of making that parking lot workable, however we do it. I'd love to be able to have the business, businesses downtown say, you have to park over there.
They are, they're getting tickets now.
When I walked, we came out from the parking lot with the lock there, there's a young lady that works in the bank right there in front of it, and she parked right in front, first place in the front, right across the road from the bank, and I'm...
And she walks across to her bank?
Can't walk even from the bank, and I was in the lock, not open, she would park up against the wall, and it's a bank guy, he said, my friend gets fit every time she sees her, she said, why does she always have to park up right there in front?
She'd tell Dave Minor.
Some people be watching.
Diana?
She'd tell Dave Minor.
She's there all day, she's there all day.
You know who thought that is? It's the manager of the bank, or the, the owner of this business or that, he should tell their employees that...
Yeah, it's, it's not that I've ever needed parking spot, but, you know.
Years and years ago, when I was manager of the Grand Union, my employees did not park next to the store, and that's something you just don't, those are for your customers. So we just have to get that across, and I think we will eventually.
Yeah, we will.
Get that big parking lot that needs to be pulled.
Give Dave Minor some overtime.
All second.
Doing any good there, 'cause it's under...
Second.
Right, you moved it, can you second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? None, passed.
Resolved the city chamber will be authorized to transfer two hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars from the water contingent account into the F eighty-three twenty account for the completion of the new water tower.
I will move that.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is this over and above what we banded for?
No.
This is part of the ban?
Contingent.
Yes or no?
We, we bonded for part of the tower, and we had enough in the fund balance to, to budget in the contingent to pay the remainder.
All right, your contract goes what, one nine?
One nine seventeen.
One nine three nine, or one nine something, how much did we ban for?
We banned for right around two million.
Two million?
Right now, you're at two forty-eight, two million forty-eight thousand. That, well, you had more than one contract, you had several there, right now, you've got, uh...
So actually, we're overrunning a couple hundred thousand dollars.
No, you're not, because you contracted for the, for the, uh, construction of the tower, you also contracted for, uh, uh, the, the engineering costs and stuff.
Yeah, but that, wasn't that off the heart of the bonding?
No, well, you did separate contracts. What this is gonna do is start paying the bills, the, uh, last bills from Chicago Virgin Iron, who constructed it, Scribo Electric, who's doing all the work in it, C D N, who's the engineering outfit, you know? Uh, actually, that project, we figured it would be two million three hundred or something like that, but we budgeted, and last year's budget for this year, four hundred thousand dollars, I believe, in the, in the water contingency that we took out of their fund balance to go along with the, the payments after the spot.
So that was our...
All this is gonna do is put it in the right water budget.
Right.
So as they get the bills in, they authorize the ban, it's all budgeted for it.
For Jim LaBoda.
Yeah.
I was just under the impression when we contracted for that tower, that was, in its entirety, was the one nine.
No, it was, it exceeded two million, we knew that. Yep.
Okay.
Wasn't a bad deal if we have it another ninety years.
And you know what the mayor says, another hundred years, nobody'll know the difference.
Our grandchildren will, if we ever get any.
He's not hearing, so we gotta say.
Haven't got any yet.
So we had the motion, we had the second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? None, passed. Item number twelve?
Ten.
Ten.
Ten?
Uh, this basically is giving us the authority, um, to, uh, issue licensed multi-year dog licenses for up to three years. Uh, a lot of people like to readily commit and just license their dog for a year, they would like to license them for three years, all, a lot of the, all the other municipalities I know of is doing it, and that just gives us, um, a put this on the record that we, we can do this.
Are the, are the dog owners gonna have the option of taking one, two, or three?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
Yep. All in favor?
Caught up, yeah.
Sorry, it's fine. No. Is there a motion on that?
Yeah.
Oh, Terry, you moved it?
Yeah, um...
Our question?
Do they pay, like, say they pay five dollars?
Three years, all three.
They'll pay it off?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? None, passed.
Oh, it's a long one.
Resolved the city chamber will be authorized to transfer sixty...
There'll be no laughing.
Sixty-three hundred dollars from the contingent account into the A fifty-one thirty-two account.
What's that for?
For the removal of hazardous materials located at the D P W garage.
Another one.
Somebody wanna move it? Russ again, he should...
Jeez, what material?
This is a sixth ward meeting tonight.
What is this, Ron? Yeah.
Angie, uh, when you talk about ashes, materials, paint is hazardous, but, uh, we, uh, had to do a collection, uh, because, uh, the state department of transportation has notified us, they're gonna be inspecting all public home buildings of all sorts, for a lot of paint, we had some, we found one barrel of, uh, sodium hydroxide, which I know you're here for, 'cause there's a barrel of it in, uh, CoGen. Sodium hydroxide is extremely, uh, corrosive, has high a tendency to be...
Have a good night, Joe.
Hi, Joe.
But a lot of it came from, uh...
Hi, Mr. Fimera.
A lot of it came... It didn't all come in the garage.
Right.
Some came from recreation, some came from the waste stream.
That's just where you're, where it's...
We relocated all one area, we got an Alfa, and you're safety clean, they have to test it, some of this went around so many...
Why didn't, why didn't we take it out to the county when they just had theirs?
They would not take ours.
They wouldn't take ours? They wouldn't take this stuff.
We gotta talk to them.
We offered of taking some of it out.
Yeah. Take a little bit out of these carloads.
That barrel of sodium hydroxide, you wouldn't want to take that.
Or maybe we could convince, convince somebody that works for the county to take all of it.
Can't now, it's, they only do that about once every couple, three years.
But anyways, it was a good thing we did it.
Oh, good.
Nobody's gonna get it.
Thanks, Ron.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Aye.
None, passed.
Resolved the city chamber will be authorized to transfer ten thousand dollars in the contingent account into engineering account for emergency tree removal and trimming.
As I mentioned earlier, um, this is, uh, in addition to our budgeted amount, which was, uh, which has been exceeded, so, um, this is, uh, a, I talked to the mayor, and, and he, his recommendation was ten thousand, so, uh, I think that's reasonable, and once again, he's gonna instruct, uh, the city forester that just to take trees down that are, uh, obviously, uh, a safety hazard. Somebody wanna make the motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? None, passed. And that's the agenda. Okay, the public, which...
It's gone.
Which consists of... Dinah, one of the golden girls.
I want answers about the co-generation plan.
There will be no answers tonight, thank you very much.
I want answers.
We're, we're just, we're just, you can only ask questions.
We're substitutes.
No, I, I, I got a lot of questions.
Okay, we've got some of the answers.
Why is this, why are they closing that, taking two guys out such a dangerous place, and you got hundreds of children playing spring ball and koala ball down there and all that sulfuric, whatever they got in there, wrote it down, and all that information, but then I get so mad, I was gone for two weeks, and I come home and read the paper, I was so mad when I was reading that paper, I was ready to blow my stack.
I don't blame you, it was a terrible article, and for him to be so irresponsible, to walk away like that, and to indicate to the public that, hey, you've got, you've gotta do something, that this building is a haz- a hazardous place.
Uh, possibly two weeks ago, I think it was our water person, was testing for water in the fire hydrant, and I thought they were flushing, and I said, like, flushing off, so I talked to my sister Alice on the phone at the time, said, I'm gonna go and get my mail, I feel as long as I'll get my mail, I asked them, what's going on? Well, he was checking the water in the fire hydrant to see if it was, I don't know what he was working in it, 'cause it seems as though the people in the house that used to have, used to be the press union, had been watering, I don't know if it got a cellar or not, but they didn't know where the water was coming from, was it coming from the co-generation plant, or was it coming from the line? Now, I don't know what kind of water you use in the fire hydrant, is it the same kind of water we use in our sink?
Yes, sure, city, city water supply.
'Cause he was checking for something, because he had to check it, I never did go down and ask neighbors, I don't know those people, but to see why, but if it has anything to do with water coming from that co-generation plant...
So maybe he's checking for pressure.
But he can answer my question, I'm looking on paper.
I'm glad you're here tonight to ask these kind of questions, because we do have somebody of, 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 that has all that kind of information, Mr. Woodward.
Well, you were on vacation, we were in here.
I can tell.
I wasn't on vacation, I was baking it.
That's definitely not vacation.
For two weeks, because I was tired by the time I came home, and that's all I needed.
Spencer wants his courtroom back, we have to leave.
Meeting adjourned.
What, it's going through?
Yes, okay.
You gotta talk a lot, because I got a very bad hearing problem, my hearing ain't no good.
A guy named Osmond Bonet owns that cogen facility, he acquired it from the Suri County Industrial Development Agency, uh, where Mike Tribbley was the director. The reason he acquired it from them is because, at the time that Fulton CoGen was operating, it was off the city tax rules, and was in, it was in, in what was into a pilot agreement. When, uh, El Paso Energy pulled out, uh, they left it high and dry, uh, and, and, and at that time, the IDA had, uh, an interest in the property. So, they worked a deal out with Osmond Bonet, who by the way, has, has twenty percent of the holdings in New York Chocolate, although they've kicked him out of there, thinking that if the chocolate factory took off, that the, it would be beneficial to keep the cogeneration facility, because there was packaged boilers in there, and they could provide steam for, for the, the operation of chocolate. That happened for a while. Uh, New York Chocolate, for whatever the reasons, uh, didn't pay their steam bill, was quite substantial, so, uh, Bonet shut down. And he has never been a good neighbor, he's never paid a diamond taxes since he's been here, he owes us, uh, two pilot agreements, uh, which, which the IDA has him in federal court over, and the reason for him to fly from California to fire these two guys...
Doctors?
Yes. I won't call them doctors, I, I tell them, you're not my doctor. So anyways, he came here to try to embarrass the IDA into taking their, uh, interest out of federal court so he can get the money that, that New York Chocolate owes him. But he had to mention, and the reason he mentioned it was to pressure them and the community, oh, by the way, uh, these two guys are going away, and we have a, um, tank that has fourteen-hundred gallons of ninety-three percent sulfuric acid, and an equal tank, uh, that has fifty-three percent sodium hydroxide, both nasty chemicals, both commonly used in industry for the regeneration of boilers. Uh, they clean the boilers with the acid, and then when they flush the boilers, they use the sodium hydroxide to neutralize the acid, because acid is on zero pH scale, and sodium hydroxide is on fourteen, so, both the total opposite ends. He made a point of saying that over the winter, there was structural damage to the roof, and the water could get in, and he knows that water, uh, most people know that water, and certainly a guy calls himself doctor would know, that water, uh, does not mix with sulfuric acid. So, Kevin Caracoli from, uh, which is the attorney for the IDA, has contacted us, uh, we've informed the hazmat teams and asked us to, and I say us, our fire department, to gain access, but we have to do it by legal means, it's still private property, and inspect the tanks to make sure that they're secure. I worked with sulfuric acid in Nesselis for years, and, and sodium hydroxide, and unless the tanks are in terrible shape, there's no way water can come down the top and get in them, unless something was left open intentionally. Uh, so, we will get in and inspect them. Also, we are citing him, uh, because what he did was illegal. When you're abandoning a, a factory, uh, all that stuff has to be removed, and I'm sure he knows that, he just knows we gotta go to California to get them. So, we're gonna look at it, we'll, we have to confirm that what he said, the chemicals are actually what he says they are, make sure the vent line is not, um, um, obstructed, because that way it'll build up pressure if it wasn't. And if we drag, if he drags his feet too long, then what we'll probably do is, we will get a court order to go in there and remove those chemicals off-site and charge against the property. At the end of this year, that will go up for taxes, and Fulton will end up with it anyway. But, that was a scare tactic to try to pressure, I believe, the IDA into giving them that money. Uh, and from day one, he told me, we have no money, therefore, we pay you nothing. So, we shut his water off after ten grand, and so, that, whatever liquid is coming into their cellar is not coming from there. If it was sulfuric acid, you'd know in a heartbeat. That guy was taking a sample of that hydrant to test the level of chlorine residual on that hydrant, that way he could compare it with the water in the cellar, and if it had the same residual, he would know they have a water leak, that, that's why they do that. So, we're on top of it, we're doing all we can do, we gotta cut the locks to gain access, but certainly, we have that thing called the Constitution, where we have to do due process of the law to, to enter into it, to make sure that they won't let us in. You lock the gate, and you lock the doors.
Let's be the line.
Yeah, we're well aware of that.
Back, back, back.
Well, we need, yeah, well, I think he put himself in a criminal position when he advertised what was there, and, and also alluded to how you could make it bad, by putting water in it.
I mean, he's the, he's the owner of the building, he has to have that responsibility, he can't just walk away.
He knows that.
He knows that.
He understands.
Almost done, Spencer.
Jerry, when I saw that, oh, bro.
Do you have any?
I went to matter, I got another problem, one more problem.
Stay right there, Ron.
Oh, that's okay. Do you have any more questions about that?
Yes, she has one problem.
One more comes up.
But when we do the inspection, I'll, you know...
Um, this bridge thing, falling down?
Falling bridges?
Yeah, um, how many times I talked about all the cracks along the cement, I mean, those metal things, they haven't been built yet. There are potholes in front of those steel frames that hold the bridge up, waste getting down in there, they talked about what can happen, so, those little, um, vents with the catch basin.
Crates.
Holodur, they haven't been touched yet.
On, on Knight Street?
Both bridges, and that's, uh, and it's...
Okay, those are our responsibility, but the, but the bridge itself is a state responsibility, and they've been, they've been in before.
Do you understand, Richard, we have the, we have the state inspection every year, we had one done last year, we'll have one done this year. The venture, I got all the drains, our plug, they get dirt in, but they're, if you clean them out, they don't drain water, because when they do, they drain water under the boats, they're going under the bridge, so they were plugged with tension.
With the dirt?
Well, no, the dirt, obviously, the road runs in, the basin is still there, but the pipe is flushing, you know, dump water, now the, uh, Broadway Bridge, we've got the state engineer trying to do repair on those, uh, expansions.
Yeah, they were working on that.
And we, I think Danny O'Brien, the Capitol Commissioner, did it one, uh, DPW committee this year, that some of the chips went, had to be spanned, some made the tie.
What was that, by Duncan Dome, where they had to make the electric run from heading in the west? There's these potholes right in front of those metal plates, those frame, that's framework at the bridge, and you got a pile, you can see them, if you walk, which I haven't done in the past couple weeks, so I don't know if they were, had, if they've done anything the last three weeks, but there hasn't been anything up prior to the three weeks ago. That's all, I gotta go watch the engine.
Diana, thanks, thanks for being here. Uh, we have one more person, unless he's an old skateboarder, Mr. David Guyer from the public.
Thanks.
Do you have any questions for the council? No. We thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming, Davis.
Uh, without you two and without the skateboarders, we would've been by ourselves.
And the press.
And the press, accord, I'm sorry, the press, the press is always there, thank goodness. And Terry, um, having heard from the public, uh, anything from the council? First ward.
I don't think I have anything.
Second ward.
I actually do have something this evening.
All right, lay it on us.
Sorry to keep you all here any longer, but, uh, I get you to just take one of these and pass them down for me, Tom, if you would please.
I'm too.
I'm supposed to meet somebody here, come eight thirty?
Eight thirty?
I don't know. I'll just start. Recently, I, uh, saw a broadcast on the news about flags in crosswalks. It looked like a very good idea, so I went to Baldwinsville to see how these flags worked. Um, I spoke with the village clerk and some of the police officers, they're ecstatic about it. Uh, actually, a gentleman in a wheelchair used one of these flags when I was there. Basically, uh, the way this works, there's flags on either side of the street, when a pedestrian wants to cross, at the appropriate time, they would raise the flag to alert motorists and pedestrians, that a pedestrian is in the crosswalk. Uh, I think there's key locations in Fulton that would benefit from the use of these flags, namely, the intersection of Route Forty-eight and West Broadway, the impending traffic from Walmart's gonna make it more difficult, especially for seniors and disabled people to get across that intersection. Um, as you know, I have the Mill Apartments there in my ward, and it's been a complaint that they can't get across that street. Beverly actually, uh, drives her car to go up the street to get her hair done, she manages the facility, and she's an able-bodied, middle-aged woman. So, what's happening, those people are calling friends and family to come in if they don't have a car, and go for a ride. Well, it's not to Hargraves and, uh, Pizza Hut and the beauty shops that are right close by, which they would frequent if they felt comfortable crossing the street. So, uh, I am gonna, uh, put in a work order that we may implement this at some time, and I, I asked the council to think about it. If you have questions, I've researched it, and, uh, it works very well.
Isn't this something that would be for highway department, DPW department?
Traffic.
Traffic, traffic.
Um, Beverly's actually gone as far as saying that, uh, if these pla, flags were implemented, that her maintenance guys would put the flags out in the morning. Uh, they're not there late in the evening, but, you know, being the alderman, I would pick them up in the evening.
What we need to do, if we want to do that, is, uh, for a resolution, yeah, our traffic guys on that, because Broadway Bridge is part of the Blue Three Quarter.
State.
All in the intersection, just to pull that statement, but, our people are forced to stay alive, but we can act legislation. Because we need to drive the chains down.
Right, they have had, they do have these flags on Route Forty-eight in Beville.
Really?
Yes, they do. Um, and the other thing is, is, it's at the, at a person's discretion, I mean, it's not mandatory that you pick up a flag to walk across the street, that's just to give awareness that, hey, I'm here, and, uh, and I gotta tell you, I saw it work more than one standing there at that intersection, and, uh, I, I think it's a viable tool that we should think about even down here downtown.
That's true.
It's only gonna get worse.
Why not?
So, that asks us all to think about it, and...
I think it's a great idea. I'm just wondering about vandalism, I don't know whether people, kids would take these or not, you know?
That was my first question, when I saw the article, and I, I went to Beville, and, uh, they haven't had one stolen.
But you know, if you over-worry about vandalism, you end up with doing nothing.
Well, they haven't had one flag stolen, and...
I know, so that's good, that's a good track record, so I, I think we definitely will look, look into this.
Well, I've, I've got some copies there.
Sure.
I made extras for everybody.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, you can give them that.
Look into it, sure.
Any other copies?
Anything else, Dan?
No, thank you.